Well, good morning, everyone. Happy Tuesday. Today is Tuesday, May the 24th, 2022, and we're here at 901 Main Street in the heart of Old Town Conyers in the Assembly Hall. Today is a big day in Rockdale County. I think today is a big day all over Georgia. We've got local elections going on today, and everybody's going to be attending election watch parties tonight and seeing whether or not the candidate of their choice will make the finish line. So, got a lot going on today. Commissioners, we've got a pretty robust agenda this morning, and we want to get started. Commissioner Washington will be joining us shortly, and for right now, we'll call in our meeting to order, and we'll get started. We will be honored to have one of our very good friends, none other than Pastor Tim Hogg from the Father's House Church here in Rockdale County. The Father's House has been around for quite some time. They do a lot of work, another one of our many churches that do a lot of work behind the scenes here in Rockdale County. Pastor Hogg will be leading us in our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Come on up, Pastor.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, and it has been 32 good years.
Thirty-two good years.
Yeah, just last week.
Oh, wow. Congratulations.
We're thankful for that, and we love this community and wouldn't be here if we didn't.
Well, we appreciate all of the work you all have done, and certainly, in those 32 years, y'all have made a major positive impression on Rockdale County. Everybody know the work that you've done, you and your congregation, so we certainly appreciate it.
Well, it's a joy, and thank you.
Thank you.
Let's pray, and then we'll pledge, if you will. Father, what a joy it is to join together and to come into that situation that the Bible says, when those are here in unity, that you're with us. You said there's strength in unity. Now, Lord, we know there's also diversity in unity. There's different thoughts, different approaches, but those can bring us to a place of a single flow, like many branches running into a river and creating the mighty river, Lord. We pray for that big river of what your purpose is for Rockdale County to be accomplished, and that today will be a part of that process. Lord, we do thank you that as well. We are honored that today does represent a day that we as citizens get to voice our thoughts, our desires, and opinions. We pray for your protection as that takes place. We pray that the candidates that are on your heart will be the candidates that will be on our hearts. We ask you that you will guide and direct our processes, and we thank you, dear Lord, that you give us this opportunity to be a part of how our government works. Now, Lord, I pray specifically for this group. I pray specifically for this meeting, that your kingdom will come and your will will be done in this meeting. And as Paul wrote in Colossians, Chapter 4, "Help our conversation to be full of grace, yet seasoned with salt, so that others can be touched for your kingdom purpose." And we praise you and we thank you for your goodness, for your protection, and for your guidance. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you once again to Pastor Tim Hogg from the Father's House Church. Thirty-two years here in Rockdale County, serving the people and doing God's work, and we certainly appreciate you and your congregation being a friend. Commissioners, I often talk about the fact that we're blessed to be able to be a part of a county and a community that still embraces the fact that we open up our meetings with invocation, and we certainly do appreciate all of our clergy from across the county coming in and participating with leading us in invocation. Moving forward on our agenda this morning, we now have special recognitions and presentation, and I'm going to ask our award-winning Public Relations Department and leadership team to share the video from the call to service that we were engaged in on last week. I wanted to say thank you for sending the email. I want to apologize as the chairman of the county for the low and slow response. Your email captured my attention this mid-afternoon, which is why we have multiple county resources and directors from various departments that you pointed out. You talked about animal control, they're here. You talked about the business license and the business community involving code enforcement. The boss of that department, the director, he's here. We got public relations out here because I want citizens to know that when citizens like yourself contact the county officers, we realize that you pay our salaries. You pay the taxes in this county, so you deserve to get this level of response. We don't have the ability to come out and make this type of show every time somebody calls us. I want to make sure you leave, I'll leave you with my personal direct number, which I give out to all citizens, so you won't be unique. Oftentimes taxpayers, Ms. Williams, you hear because you talk to people in your community, they say, "Well, I called the county, couldn't get a hold of nobody, they wouldn't come." I take that really personally.
When people call, we had a number of homeowners that said they've called about loose animals, but when they called about those loose animals, they were told that if the animal wasn't vicious, if the animal wasn't biting, that they weren't coming out. That's not acceptable when we paying increased property taxes. And Public Works does a pretty good job. We've had trees falling down on Avalon Parkway, and I think there's a Curtis or it's Mr.
Brown. Corey Brown.
Corey, Corey Brown, yeah. Corey Brown's pretty on the money, you know? He comes out, he gets those trees, and he does that. I mean, we've had a stop sign, we've had accidents right here at this, when you come out of this, this area right here.
Yes, ma'am.
Where homeowners have been hit, right there, and we've tried to get stop signs put up. And I understand there's a process. You know, that's reasonable.
Yes, ma'am.
But the animal control thing is not reading code enforcement. When we, we have covenants out here, but we definitely need the support of the county also to enforce when people come from different locations, different areas, they want to be able to do what they want to do. When we call the county, we want that backing. When we call the sheriff's department, we don't want the sheriff to go and just pat them on the back and say, "Hey, do this or do that." We want them to comply with the, the local ordinances.
We want to make sure you know that we're the best county in the state. We're not a perfect county, but we're the best. And the reason why we're the best is because we believe we have the best residents. Your email, I support, I appreciate, and I can't thank you enough for sending that email and capturing our attention this afternoon. If there's anything that I could do beyond today, please don't hesitate to let me know or reach out to any of our teams, and we'll make sure that we're responsive to your concern. So Commissioners, I want to share with you that over the last 90 days, we've been attending a series of conferences and doing a lot of traveling. Typically, you know, I've got a handheld device where I can check my email, and I scan them, but I usually dedicate time in the office where I'm detailed going through the email, one email by the next. Well, I actually missed this email. She sent, Ms. Williams, the lady in the video, she sent her original email on April the 25th, and when I said to Ms. Lee, "Where was?" She said, "You were not here, sir. You was attending a conference." So I missed her email, and I took that personal because we try to make sure that we are, number one, accessible to the citizens and that we are responsive to the citizens. Every single thing that Ms. Williams said was valid. Her approach, she sent another email saying, "Hey, I sent you an email on the 25th of April, I didn't hear from you, where are you?" And she listed and detailed out all of her concerns. This morning, I want to take a moment because, as I say this all the time, no one, no one gets anything done by themselves, and we have to take an opportunity to praise our staff when staff does a fantastic job. So this morning, I want to recognize none other than Ms. Patty Pearson. Give Patty a round of applause because Patty actually saved the day. Ms. Williams sent her second email in, and Patty read the email, and she sent the email back out to all of us, which included me, of course, in bold letters like, "Here ye, here ye, let me get your attention, don't miss this." Commissioner Williams, if you would do the honors, I'd like for you to read this letter that we're presenting to Patty. Patty, come on up, if you would. I want everybody, give Patty another round of applause. She didn't know we were going to do this this morning. Come on up, Patty, absolutely.
Don't be mad at me, okay?
Well, I just have to say that Patty is wonderful. When I, when I first took office, she was everything to me and did everything perfectly. So I'm happy to read this. Dear Patty, as the chairman of Rockdale County, I'm always pleased and proud to see a Rockdale County employee's professional demonstration of their community pride and support of the county's urgency to proactively address each citizen's request for assistance. Patty, I want to personally thank you for your immediate recognition, responsiveness, and forward-thinking call to action associated with Ms. Williams' concerns in the Old Salem Township subdivision. As a direct result of your critical assessment and awareness of the county's need to follow up and follow through, Rockdale County's leadership team quickly united our resources and provided timely county assistance and services for this community. Patty, your continued commitment to excellence and outstanding teamwork as you maintain a high standard of service for our citizens is truly valued and appreciated. It is this kind of outstanding focused customer service that makes Rockdale County such a great place. Thank you for a job well done. Respectfully, Chairman Oznesbrough.
Patty, thank you so much. We, Commissioners, we're adding, of course, that letter to talent management, human resources to the file on Patty's behalf, but it's really, we have countless numbers of employees that do wonderful things, but this was a unique and somewhat different situation. As I stated in the video to Ms. Williams, and let me just tell you again, Ms. Williams, very valid, and her approach to reaching out to us and very understanding, all of the directors and support personnel from the county that went out that particular day was there, everybody handed her a business card. But again, I could, in, in all of the movement, we have nearly almost 95,000 residents, and as much as I give my number out to everybody, sometimes I miss stuff. And Patty caught it, and I really say that she saved the day. The other unique piece of this, we only had Ms. Williams's email. We did not have her phone number to call her back, and we didn't have her exact address. So I kind of went back into police mode a little bit, and I got ahold of Patty, I said, "Listen, we don't have her email address, but do this and do that, and I guarantee we'll find her." Patty found the address, we rang the doorbell, Ms. Williams answered the door, we was at the right house and got, got to her, was able, and had a wonderful conversation with her, and again, she was most appreciative. Going forward, we're going to be working with the HOA. I think she's either the president of the HOA out there at Old Salem Township, she is the president, and we know with the show of force we had that day of all of the county resources, the community had a lot of things to talk about, and she was able to tell them that, yes, he missed my email on the 25th. I followed up, they came out, and, and we showed up that particular day. What we'd like to say to all of our citizens, first of all, let me go back. This is both an internal and an external teachable moment. The importance of having staff to be in tune and in touch with what's going on was highly displayed and demonstrated through the work of Patty Pearson. Internally, there's multiple lessons to be learned for our staff and techaways just in that alone, Chief Mack. Externally, the message we send to our citizens that, "Hey, y'all are human, and we have humans that work for us." So sometimes we make mistakes, sometimes we overlook things, but we want to serve our citizens here in Rockdale County. And the beauty of, and one of the bragging points, Commissioner Washington, about Rockdale is that we are an intimate community where you can get ahold of one of the Commissioners, or get ahold of the chairman, or the mayor, or the fire chief, and really have a real conversation, where in some communities that are so much larger than us, you really can't get through to people the same way. Hats off to all of our employees who, at the last minute on a hot day, responded to the call to service, and I want to ask you all to join me one more time, and let's give Patty Pearson another round of applause. Patty, how long have you been with Rockdale County now? Thirteen years. Thirteen years. Patty's done a fantastic job. She's a part of the leadership team over in the Board of Commissioners office, and she does a wonderful job. Patty, we appreciate you and what you've done. I think it's important, Commissioners, to make sure that we highlight our folk and our staff when they go above and beyond the call of duty. Thank you so much. At this time, I think we're going to have another presentation from our Public Relations Department centered around the RWR, our water department. I want to ask our PR Department to go ahead and, and share that wonderful video that we've put together.
The magnitude of the size of the system we have on a sanitary sewer, there are 240 miles of sewer pipe, and there are 6,000 manholes that's on a sanitary side. On the water side, we have 608 miles of water line that we have to maintain. Once you put the system in, it's not, you fix it and leave it alone. It's a continual thing, it's a maintenance on it, just like your vehicle. When you buy a vehicle, you have continual oil changes you have to do, you have to do everything to keep it going. If you don't keep putting maintenance and maintaining your system, you're going to be right back to where you were. So it's not a fix and let go, it's a continual perpetual thing that's going to be going on. All of the structures are underground, and, and all pipes have a life, and we're at that point where it's ending their life. So they're, because of the gases in the sewers and things going down, the pipes are deteriorating, and those are the things that happen. But because they're buried, you don't know it, you think everything is fine until it happens. We did some historical data going back to 2014, and we had so many spills, and, and it's been like a roller coaster goes up and down because you don't know until it actually happens. But this is something that's just start happening, it's been going on the whole time, and we just need to start fixing it instead of putting a band-aid on it, we need to address the issue. It's not just Rockdale County. The large cities, the city of Atlanta is on a huge consent decree. The Cab County is on a huge consent decree by the EBD for those things. Little, small cities like the city of East Pointe at one point, they had a consent decree. You can look California, LA, New York, it's a global thing. It's not just Rockdale. We add additional resources to help us. We're gonna, doing an SSES, that's a sanitary sewer evaluation study. And in that study, we does closed circuit TV, we do manhole inspections, we do visual inspections and mapping, and smoke testing. Smoke testing is when we inject smoke into the, into the line, and if it comes up through the ground or something, we know there's a defect in that pipe because it got out, because the pipe is supposed to be a closed system. With the completion of the SSES, we come up, we came up with the three Rs, the review, the repair, and, and the replace. And we're going to need additional resources to do that. Of course, it's going to be money, that's the main resource, but we're going to need additional staff to help go through the review process because we have over 200 miles of sanitary sewers, so we're going to have to have additional staff to help do that. We're going to have, have to have inspections, to go out to do the inspections in the field. We're going to have to also have an educational component to the citizens of what to put in the sewer line. There are federal grants out there to help with aging infrastructure. We have a platform in, in the past, and we'll be continuing searching for grants that, that can aid us in our undertaking of improving our infrastructure. If we have a good system, we can bring in different companies, we can bring in different types of things to come in. But if you, your infrastructure, and we don't buy the resources to get there, that can stagnate the development of the county. Things that's not suitable to go down the sewer system, it shouldn't be put in the sewer system. If you have grease from cooking, you should put it in a container, put cat litter, and then discard it with your trash. Don't flush it. No baby wipes, none of those things, type of things. I encourage our citizens to join us with this fight on our aging infrastructure. They can do their participation by not putting grease, oils, and fat into the sewer system because that would really hurt the system.
To separate entities, number one, I'm going to start with Public Relations, specifically Mr. Shawn Kimball for putting this and producing this video. Then number two, of course, Director Derek Bogan, Director of Water Resources. Director Bogan is not a big, big talker, but he has over 30 years of experience and industry knowledge about water and water resources. You heard it come out in that particular video about his 30 years of, of industry knowledge and, and experience. He explained very, very well about the do's and don'ts, what should, should not go through our system, but he also talked about the maintenance and the upkeep and being proactive. He went on to say that we're not isolated here in Rockdale County, we're not unique. Every municipality and county across the globe, as he stated, are dealing with these issues. I said to Director Bogan about a month ago, I said, "Listen, we're getting a lot of spills," and each time he'd come and call or text and say, "Chairman, we got a spill, we had a spill at 2:00 AM or water break or whatever." I'd say, "Well, how old do you think the pipe was?" He said, "Oh, 35, 40, 45 years old." He said, "Some of them may even be older than that." So I said, "Did we get it fixed and get, get it stopped, and did we report it to the EPA?" He said, "We did all of that." I said, "But what we've got to do, we have to share this with our citizens. Our crews are so busy going out and getting the work done and fixing it and fixing the problem, we're not making the public aware of the issue." So when we come into our budget cycles and asking for more funding and more personnel, sometimes people don't know why we're asking, but if we show the, show these videos and photographs of what the, what's underneath the ground that most people have no clue of, that brings them into a connection of understanding why we need to maintain the county and keep it moving in an upward direction. We're driving across these roadways day to day, day in and day out, we have no clue. There's 40-year-old plus pipes that at any given moment may burst or have a break, and it impacts our system. And they closed it out by sharing about what not to put down your drain at home, what can citizens do to help us? He gave some very points. We've also implemented the utility education specialists, and a part of that task is to do just that, meet with HOAs, churches, community people, young people in our schools, to teach them what not to go down the drain. I really wanted to highlight both Public Relations as well as RWR, and specifically the leadership of Director Bogan. So let's give them both a round of applause. This is the kind of information and education that we will be bringing forth to you from time to time from various departments as we work to improve and make improvements throughout our departments and areas of focus here in the county. And we're going to be showing and telling the story a lot more in all of our departments as we go forward, so our citizens can see. When he talked about the, the device to put the camera in, they actually, Shawn was able to show that pipe with the camera, and, and he explained the smoke thing. Well, until I actually saw that, Madam Clerk, I didn't really connect it, but when I saw it on the video, I said, "Okay, it makes sense." Well, that piece of equipment costs a lot of money.
Well, I was going to say, they did that smoke thing in my neighborhood, and I don't know what they found, but they did do that test. But I was going to say, the other, last week when I was out in the neighborhood, I saw this truck go by, it had ESG on the side. When I came back the other way, they were working in the street, and they were, I saw I stopped, and I thanked them for what they were doing. ESG is the company that we contract with for, to assist Rockdale Water Resources, and they were real nice, the two guys that were out there. Said, "Oh," because they had the manhole open, they said, "We're cleaning out the sewer." So I wanted to say, there's our tax dollars that were right there.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, again, I don't know if I asked this already or not, but y'all give Shawn and RWR a round of applause. It's a poor frog that won't praise his own partner. We've got good people and extraordinary talent throughout the ranks of our employees and our workforce, and we have to really highlight. But more importantly, Chief Kate, we have to make sure we let the public know what we're doing and how their tax dollars are being spent. It really made me feel good when he talked about that we're not alone, there's other places and other counties that are dealing with the same issue, Commissioner Washington. So it just really brings it full circle, and we really do appreciate the fine work that they're doing. One more announcement under this heading of Special Recognitions and Presentation, I'm going to ask that Director, Executive Director Sue Sanders, come on up. She's got some more good news to share with us about people in progress.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just wanted to take a moment and recognize the PR Department, as I've been overseeing them for a short period, but they did receive this morning an email that they won five Telly Awards for 2022. So that's really exciting, and they're competing.
What is a Telly Award?
Glad you asked. The Telly Awards, they were founded in 1979 to honor excellence in local, regional, and cable television commercials with non-broadcast video and television. And then with the evolution and rise of digital video, today they reflect and celebrate the new era of moving image on and offline. They receive over 12,000 entries from all 50 states and five continents. They represent work from some of the most respected advertising agencies, television stations, production companies, and publishers from around the world. And they recognize work that has been created for clients and also creatively. And they're competing with places like CBS Interactive, Comcast, ESPN, Fox, HBO, Microsoft, MLB, things like that. So this year, the awards, they received five, three of them are silver, one for miscellaneous local TV for a video on the sheriff's office youth receiving a hero award.
Wow.
The second is for public interest awareness for local TV, and that was for a video created for the sheriff's office delivering a ramp to a special needs student that was missing school. The third silver award was for social responsibility for local TV, and that was for Rockdale County, Georgia, elected officials promoting COVID awareness. That's pretty neat, too.
Very good.
Two of the awards were bronze, and they are, one of them was for a non-broadcast video, and that was for employee communications, and that's "Don't Click That" from Technology Services Video.
Yes, yes.
And the second is social responsibility for local TV, and that was the Grady Jarrett Teen Center ribbon cutting. So those are the five awards, and I've worked with, we all have known Shawn and Janetta for many years, and they do a great job.
Absolutely.
And I just want to take a minute and recognize them, I know they're watching, that they do fine work and the PR Department in general, so.
Let's give them a round of applause. Well, you know, the Telly Awards is really a big thing. When you talk about local government, the fact that we, we're fortunate and blessed here in the county to have our own government access television station, channel, Rockdale Channel 23. The, the commercials that we produce, the videos that we produce are second to none. They're top quality, and out on the regular market, it would really cost a lot of money for a local entity. When we, we do things like Spotlight on Faith, Spotlight on Business, with, with any good story that's happening, then we get wind of it, we try to produce and turn it into a positive story. There are so many great things that are happening in Rockdale County. Our PR Department has done a fantastic job, and we're looking forward to them doing even greater things in the days ahead. But to have the kind But to have the kind of talent onboard. Shawn, I think now our PR department has one or two drones. We're able to take our drones out and assist and do different things and capture footage. All of that is a big deal when you're trying to tell the story about the county and trying to produce different videos to be able to compete in a whole, she talked about us competing against CBS and Microsoft Soft and some of those other folks out there. A little bit of Rockdale County, that's, 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 give them another round of We are rocking and rolling. Commissioner Washington, you thinking something? You wanted to say something about all that? What are your thoughts?
So the vanity in me was thinking that the the COVID thing, that was like my baby. So, you know, I feel like the award is mine. But no, congratulations for all of the awards. It's, it's great to be recognized. But you asked me what I was thinking, so that was what I was thinking at the time.
We appreciate your honesty. Absolutely. Well, thank you again to all of our employees, Public Relations, Water, Patty Pearson, everybody who work hard. And again, we've got countless numbers. There's not enough time in the day for us to go through some of the things that we're doing. But one of the things that we ask as we move forward, we ask public relations to do going forward, go into those elected officials' offices, go into those various departments and capture those stories as they interact with the public and talk about the things that you don't see on the surface. Typically, in an evening news broadcast, they're almost always looking to tell you something not so good. The plus of us having our own access channel, we get to tell the great stories and the good stories of Rockdale County people making progress and doing great things. So keep up the good work. At this time, Commissioners, we're gonna move to item number four on our agenda, and we will start with the approval of the agenda. What is your pleasure?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I second the motion.
It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number five is the approval of the minutes from May tenth of 2022, May eleventh twenty-two, and May twelfth of 2022. What is your pleasure?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. There's no unfinished business at this time. We'll move on to the regular agenda, item number seven.
All right, item number two-two-seven is with the Atlanta Regional Commission through the Parks and Recreation Department, the Senior Services Division. This is for Home and Community-Based Services Grant, change order number one to Contract twenty-twenty-one dash ninety-seven. This is an adjustment in services to better serve clients during COVID shutdown. There's no change in price. The term was July first, twenty-twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Any questions or comments on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item two-twenty-eight is with the Atlanta Regional Commission through the Parks and Recreation Department in the Senior Services Division. This is for the Transportation Voucher Grant. It's change order number one to Contract twenty-twenty-one dash one forty-three. The additional funds are thirty-one thousand, nine hundred, twenty dollars and forty cents. The term is July first, twenty-twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
I move to approve the contract as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item two-twenty-nine.
This is with Olive Avenue Productions LLC through the Parks and Recreation Department. This is for permission to film Doom Patrol, Season Four, at Johnson Park. It's sixteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars in revenue. The term is April twenty-fifth, twenty-two, through April twenty-ninth, twenty-two, and this is submitted as a ratification.
I move to ratify this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
It has been properly motioned and seconded. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item two-three-zero, please.
This is with Miller Avenue Productions LLC through the Parks and Recreation Department. This is for permission to park at Legion Field for productions, cars, trailers, and crew cars relating to the filming of Road Trip, and permission to utilize auditorium to store extra filming equipment. It's three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars in revenue, and the term is April eleventh, twenty-two, through April fourteenth, twenty-two, and this is submitted as a ratification.
I move to ratify this contract.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item two-thirty-one is with Georgia Time Recorder Company Incorporated through the Clerk of Court's Office. This is for the annual preventative maintenance for date timestamps with analog clocks in the amount of one thousand, two hundred, seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents. The term is July first, twenty-two, through July thirtieth, twenty-three.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item two-thirty-two, please.
This is with True North Emergency Management LLC for the Rockdale County Emergency Management Agency for monitoring and consulting of debris removal by third party on a standby basis. This is for one year with four one-year renewal options.
I move to approve the contract.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item two-thirty-three is with Daisys Solutions Incorporated through the Technology Services Department. This is for equipment for wireless network connectivity for the District Attorney's Office in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, six hundred, eighty-one dollars and forty cents, and this is host-funded.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Any comments or questions on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item two-thirty-four is with the Georgia Department of Transportation through the Water Resources Department. This is for a standard utility agreement slash contract item agreement for State Route twenty slash Loganville Highway and County Road ninety-eight slash West High, West High Tower Trail. This is for the water main relocations in the amount of two hundred, forty-five thousand, four hundred, ten dollars and sixty-one cents.
I move to approve the contract.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item two-thirty-five is with the Georgia Department of Transportation through the Water Resources Department. This is a standard utility agreement slash contract item agreement for State Route one thirty-eight and County Road six slash County Road four forty-three slash Union Church Road. This is for water main relocations in the amount of fifty-four thousand, five hundred, forty-four dollars and twenty-six cents.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions?
This is for a roundabout, right? This is going at that location.
Both of those, yeah.
Yeah, both of them are. But I was down at this particular spot not a few weeks ago and waited forever at that four-way stop.
So you welcomed the roundabout?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
So that roundabout will keep you cautiously moving.
Yes.
Very good, very good. All right, it's been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item two-thirty-six is with QK four for General Services Department. This is for the Rockdale River Trail Connector. Task Order One will perform the environmental and structural diligence needed to study the optimal routing of the trail and deliver a preliminary concept report for GDOT's PDP process in the amount of seventy-three thousand, eight hundred, sixty dollars and eighty-two cents, and it's twenty-eight weeks from the notice to proceed, and this is SPOS-funded.
I move to approve this contract.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or comments?
I'm excited about the connectivity of the trail, just as a amenity for the county, but, you know, also the ability for us to get out and and do more activities in nature. That's very, very important. So this is exciting to me.
And it's SPOS-funded.
And it's SPOS-funded.
So that's, that's even more to be excited about. Absolutely. It's been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item two-thirty-seven is with Thompson Heine LLP through the Finance Department. This is for development and implementation of an equal business opportunity program in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, and the term is nine months.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
And I happily second it.
And we have to talk about this. I'm gonna let you, I'm sorry, I'm gonna let the chair let you start.
Okay, all right, all right. All right, I'm gonna hear it all, y'all.
Lot going on in that room this morning.
Executive Director Lewis, would you come on up and give us, do the honors and and share with us the excitement about this particular item?
Yes, we're excited to develop a program to help us reach some of our smaller, our minority, our women-owned businesses here in Rockdale County, to help us develop a program to ensure that we are doing all we can to support those businesses here in Rockdale County.
Very good, very good. Commissioner Williams, you also done some work along those areas. I know you pushed them along with that as well.
I, I did. I spearheaded that movement, and I'm really excited about it because it's, it's an outreach to help these underserved, underprivileged businesses, especially small businesses, to know how to get a contract with the county. And the company that's doing this is, has developed these, this plan for Fulton County. And so they know exactly how to word it, how to, how to present it so that it's completely legal and meets all of the legal requirements. And I'm really excited about it because I think, I think this is great for our economic development.
Absolutely. Commissioner Washington?
She took the words right out of my mouth. This is gonna be great for our economic development initiative. We have a, something that we're working on. We should have it finished maybe this week so we can announce it next week, but this is gonna dovetail right into that. And I thank you, Commissioner Williams, for spearheading this, understanding the need for this in the community and making it happen. So I appreciate all that you've done for this initiative.
You know, when we, each time, I think there's a good bit of excitement every time we talk about economic development and particularly entrepreneurs and small businesses, and we're a little bit selfish, because guess who we're concerned about? Rockdale County. So when we talk about economic development and small businesses, anything that we can do to assist, we're still in what we call post-COVID. So some businesses did not survive through all of this stuff, and a few are, that was hanging around, they were somewhat on the ventilator. Now we get a chance to help them come off that ventilator. We encourage all of our folks to do everything you can to support our local small businesses and entrepreneurs. But even in the midst of COVID, a lot of new businesses were birthed and new entrepreneurs came to life at the same time. So people found a new, a lot of new and creative ways of earning money and using their gifts and talents. Executive Director Lewis, we appreciate the work that you and your team were doing in the Finance Department, working with both Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams on these initiatives. All three of us sort of have our hand on the wheel, so to speak, when it comes to economic development, because we understand it takes the weight of the three of us and the entire board to help push these projects forward here in Rockdale County. This is another pivot toward progress when I think about the people in our community. So I think that deserves a round of applause. Let's give it a round of applause. So.
So you had a motion and a second.
Thank you.
All right.
It's been properly motioned and seconded and kept on track by Executive Director Rutledge. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Director. Next item, please.
All right, item two-thirty-eight is a requisition with the Clerk of Court's Office through Janice Morris, and this is for jury, jury fees for twenty-twenty-two in the amount of thirty thousand dollars.
I move to approve this requisition.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. I do wanna recognize our Clerk of Court, Ms. Morris is here this morning. Good to see you this morning. And I want to just take a moment because Ms. Morris was a part of the CIP process on last week, and she did an outstanding job in her presentation, Chief Kate, about the needs over in the Clerk's Office. And one of the things I picked up on, Ms. Morris talked about, she said, listen, I'm only asking for what I really, really need. We recognize where the county is in terms of its coffers and finances, so we're gonna keep this simple, sweet and simple, and she did just that. She came in and she presented and only asked for what she needs. She didn't have two grocery buggy carts. She only had a little small basket, not a bucket, but a basket, and got into that exactly what she needed. So we appreciate, but more importantly, we appreciate her attitude and her approach towards working with the BOC. That means so much because it makes communication and working together as a team so much more smoother now and in the days ahead. So Clerk, Morris, thank you so much. We appreciate you. Keep up the good work, and you can always drop by, whether you've got something on the agenda or not, you're welcome here. Absolutely.
I have a question. Clerk, Madam Clerk, do you know who sets the amount that we get paid for jury fees? Jury fees, is it the county or is it the state? Does anybody?
It's the state, and then we ask the county for an increase to pass it on, and the state will allow it.
Okay, thank you.
Fifteen hours?
Yeah, well, that was there for two days, but twenty-five dollars a day.
Yeah, we would like to see that in the future.
Because when you think about it, twenty-five dollars, this might be maybe hours worth of work, and people are giving up. Like, there was one guy who was a contractor who had to, to give up his entire day's worth of contracting to, to sit and actually not be chosen for jury duty, and he got paid twenty-five dollars. I'm not saying that we're gonna make people rich, but, you know, twenty-five dollars has been there for a long time.
It's been twenty-five for a long time, I'm sure my press does.
Yes, and Commissioner, if I may, that, that can certainly be a topic of discussion as we prepare for the twenty-twenty-three budget. We can provide an analysis to the BOC as to what other counties are doing and, and provide that to you, yes.
Thank you.
And, and let's not leave out the part that we certainly do. We live in both a republic and a democracy, and we appreciate the citizens and their call to service when they're asked to serve on a jury. As Commissioner Washington pointed out, it's not to make anybody rich, but we do want to give you some type of honorarium for showing up on that day. And unfortunately, a lot of businesspeople are called, and they have to lay all their business to the side and come in and do their civic duty. If we didn't have citizens who would participate in our democracy and in this republic that we are so proud of, then we wouldn't have a system that work at all. So we have to have that. So there may be an opportunity to revisit the increasing of those funds, but more importantly than the funds, I want to thank people for their time and their talent, because we certainly do appreciate them coming out and participating in the process.
And as I said, the Clerk does a great job of, of doing that when we're in the selection process. It's, it's very comfortable, it's very amenable. She makes sure everybody feels, because she's very interactive with everybody, talking, making jokes, some funny, some not, no, I'm just joking. But, you know, it's, it's a good atmosphere over there, so I appreciate it, that.
Director Rutledge?
Motion second.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Thank you so much. Item two-thirty-nine now.
This is a requisition with the General Services Department for Waste Quip. This is the replacement compactor at the recycling center in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, six hundred, eighty-nine dollars and one cent. This is host-funded and submitted for ratification.
I move to ratify this requisition as presented.
And I second that motion because our citizens have been really irritated with the recycling center because of the broken machinery. So this is really good news.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Let me just say a, a quick bit about that because you, both of you are absolutely right. I, I felt the energy coming from you when you talked about this particular item. We have services in We have services in Rockdale County that a lot of other communities don't have. And let me just point out the fact that every community in the metro does not have a recycling center that has the type of equipment. We've had this for quite some time in Rockdale County. Things break down. Sometimes it slows up the process, but it's a big plus. If you've ever driven by there on a Saturday and see the line of cars on Sigmund Road, folks lined up, they really take advantage of that. So it's another small but large thing in the turn, in the bigger reality of folks keeping their yards clean, household waste and products. So it's a big plus in Rockdale County that I know they don't have in other communities. So many other communities, you have to call the guy that has the truck and say, we haul away junk, and you gotta pay him. But here, you can haul your own junk over to the recycling center and dispose of it properly. And we strongly encourage that in the area of community improvement and code enforcement so that you don't put it on the side of the road somewhere. But all of this and the fact that it was supported by host funds, that needs to be pointed out as well.
And the fact that we found out by a citizen who sent, well, I found out, that the machinery was broken because a citizen let us know it, and I appreciate that.
And the citizen expressed the frustration about it. Our employees were already frustrated, and they were dealing with a situation to go through the internal process. So and now we've gotten it taken care of, so absolutely. Next item, please.
Right, item two forty is an expenditure request with envelopes and forms incorporated through Sherwood. This is for the Tax Assessor's Office. This is for postage for the mailing of thirty-seven thousand notice of assessments in the amount of seventeen thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars.
I move to approve this expenditure request as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item two forty-one is an expenditure request through Manitron Amensum Technologies for the Technology Services Department. And this is for the annual escrow fee, January twenty-two through December twenty-two, the Tax Commissioners, and the VCS tax support. The term for that one is January twenty-two through December twenty-two, and the VCS tax barcode module in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars.
I move to approve this expenditure request as presented.
I second the motion.
I'm gonna ask Director Moore Jackson, because I'm gonna be honest with y'all. I don't know what that is. I read it last night when I was reviewing all this, and I said, like, this is some high-tech stuff here between technology services and the Tax Commissioner. I'm so glad to see Director Moore Jackson, the Director of Technology Services, to come up here and explain. Just give us the brief, now don't take us way down a technology lane. Just give us a, you know, a ride around the corner, if you would, Director.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Commissioners, to put it very simple, this is a renewal for the software that helps to simplify the property tax management lifecycle for the Tax Commissioners' office. This is an annual renewal for software that they've used in the past to assist them in processing the tax evaluation and recording solutions that they need to process the payments.
Okay, internal management, keeping up with what's going on year after year?
Yes.
Okay, and this software allows us to do that?
It assists them in doing, continue with the process that they're doing now.
Very good. Now we know, now we know. Very good. Thank you, Director. Thank you so much. It's been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item two forty-two.
Right, this is an expenditure request with the Cal County Revenue and License Administration for the Water Resources Department. This is for sewage treatment from March twenty-two in the amount of ninety-six thousand.
Two hundred forty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents.
I move to approve this expenditure request as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item two forty-three is a request for surplus of equipment through the General Services Department.
I move to declare this item as surplus as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
All right, item two forty-four is an appointment for the Director of Public Relations Department, and we have Executive Deputy Director Tisha Carter here this morning to talk a little bit about that one and introduce the appointee.
Come on up, Ms. Carter. I don't know what to call you, Executive Deputy Director Tisha Carter. That's an inside joke for us, but certainly y'all know that Deputy Director Carter does a fantastic job. She's the number-two person in charge over at Talent Management. We call human resources Talent Management for the benefit of those who are watching. Tell us what you have for us this morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Madam Commissioners. We are so excited. So we're always excited to recommend a director, but exceptionally excited when we are able to promote an internal candidate. So let me tell you just a little bit about the recommendation. She's well-organized, creative, a proven marketing professional. She has experience working with and across teams, external clients, and agencies on creative, editorial, strategic, and tactical levels. She has a track record of delivering unique and effective content and results. She received a Bachelor of Arts degree in mass communication and psychology from Savannah State University. She received a Master of Psychology with a specialty in organizational leadership from the University of Colorado. She has a wealth of experience in marketing and leadership, and she currently serves as our Community Employee Relations Manager. I'd like to introduce you to our appointee for the Director of Public Relations, Melissa Memm.
You can't have a PR person be quiet.
Well, congratulations, Ms. Memm, on your promotion and appointment. What say you?
First of all, I would like to thank God for this wonderful opportunity, and thank you all for your vote of confidence. I look forward to working with the Public Relations Department and building on the foundation that they already have. So I'm really excited. Thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
There are no words. You know, I'm very, very, very proud to make this appointment. And I've known you for years, so very proud of the work that you've already done. I'm excited to see this next level because I know that you're so forward, thinking that you will take the PR department. We got five tele-awards this year. I'm looking for ten next year.
Pressure.
No pressure.
But no, I know that this is gonna be an outstanding opportunity, not just for you personally and professionally, but for the county, so congratulations.
Commissioner Williams?
So, you know, I read through Melissa's bio and all the things she's done, and she's got all the qualifications to do this job. But I think the thing that really makes it a good appointment is that she's just who she is. She's kind, she's warm, she's interested in what's going on in the community. And I think when you add that to the skills, you have a really dynamic person, and that's Melissa.
Thank you.
Well, I echo what both Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams have already said about Ms. Memm. She's done a fantastic job as our Community Relations Manager, and all of the things about her relationships and tie-in with Rockdale County. First started really as a citizen and a parent, working with the local PTA, and evolved from one thing to the next. The big plus for me as chairman is looking at talent that we have onboard. Sometimes we don't have the benefit of finding the talent in-house. But when we have people onboard our organization, we always try, at least this administration does, to try to make sure we afford those opportunities for people to raise up, rise up, and move to the next level. And we've been able to do that. But as Deputy Director Carter pointed out, the qualifications, the credentials, and the skill set, it's all there. So we didn't make anything up. It's right there and it's clear. So all of the passion and the proven work that you've already shown the three of us. I heard a little bit of pressure coming from Commissioner Washington about ten tele-awards next year. We'll see what happens, but we certainly do appreciate you and the work you've done thus far as being an employee for Rockdale County. But we do have high expectations going forward. I also appreciate you acknowledging the already solid foundation and workforce of our current Public Relations Department. Let's give Ms. Memm a round of applause.
Let's actually appoint her.
Yeah.
Yes.
They should appreciate that.
To make it official.
Yes, so I move to approve this appointment as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and properly seconded. Are there any additional questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations. So there's so many moving parts in our organization, and people move, and y'all know that we're, as Talent Management stated at the top of the year, we're operating in the spirit of this, and I really don't like repeating it, but that's what the industry or the social world is calling it, the great resignation. People come and go. And our law enforcement agencies, along with other departments within the county, we've been losing people here and there. This transition came about, and we had to, normally we appoint our Chief of Staff to serve as the interim of a department when there's a vacancy. It just so happened the chief was on vacation. When this vacancy came up, we appointed our Executive Director, Sue Sanders, as the interim Director of Public Relations. And she, when I said, I said, Tag, you're in, she said, you want me to do what? She said, I don't even like speaking a lot publicly, but I'll take care of it and we'll get it done. So let's give Executive Director Sue Sanders a round of applause. She served and she filled the gap during that time, and we were able to transition. And of course, the relationship and the rapport between her and Ms. Memm is second to none. So the transition from one leadership person to the next would be very smooth and really seamless as we move forward. But I do appreciate the work during that time, Executive Director Sanders, making sure that we had some oversight and leadership. We have such a core team. When you think about Shawn Kimball and Janetta Owens, they've been around here a long time. They don't need a babysitter. They don't need a babysitter, but we have to have accountability. There has to be leadership. So again, we thank Director Sanders for filling in the gap during the time that the chief was out of pocket during that time, is actually out of the country during that time. So things happen, and that's what we're all about, doing what needs to be done when it needs to be done. So we just really appreciate all of those things. We are excited about public relations. We learned years ago, this administration, that the number-one thing, one of the number-one things that we needed to do here at Rockdale County is do a better job at telling our own story. So whether we're talking about the lady who drove a school bus here for fifty years, the rap that the Sheriff's Office provided for the disabled young person, all of those unique stories of positive, good things that happen, and there's tons of more stories out there. Ms. Memm, we know you know a lot of people, so we expect you to go and extract those, extract those good stories and bring them to the forefront so that we can put them on display and talk about the good thing and the good works that's happening here in Rockdale County. Director Rutledge, I think it's time for a public comment.
Yes, and we have a few this morning, so I'll go ahead and read while the chief is bringing them to you. As a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments relative to any issues that are currently going through the public hearing process, matters that are in active litigation, political campaigning, or partisan politics will not be heard in this meeting. Speakers are to address the chairman, not each other, or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers and/or members of the audience shall be permitted.
Thank you, Director. First up, we have Ms. Corliss Turner. Come on up, Ms. Turner.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First, I want to thank Sue Sanders for the new compact. I never thought I would be so happy about a trash can. Maybe that'd minimize the flies that's usually around here, too. Thank you. And I want to thank you again. I got my bill three months in a row. Thank you, Mr. Jameson. Okay, I just had a couple of concerns or things I just wanted to bring up. I apologize for missing the last meeting. I was out of town. But I know that military is quite often mentioned for different things that, for instance, the increase in employees' pay, and I think for the PFA or several things that has been mentioned. And I did notice on the April twelve meeting, it was mentioned that employees want to go to Walmart, Kroger Publix, they have tuition in barbershop. But I want to extend that and ask you to consider that when you consider the military. That the citizens want to do the same thing, and every bill in my household has went up. Medicine that I was getting free is now costly. So not only consider that the county workers are struggling, and I do actually admire a employer who do consider their employees. I worked for a major corporation for about thirty-five years, and if I could, well, I am intending when I reach full retirement age to go back because they really took care of their employees. But also another concern was, one thing I want to mention is the five-point-nine percent raise that they got for Medicare Part B, or for Medicare. They raised the Part B from one forty-eight to one seventy. And then the food and everything else is taking the remainder, so seniors really never got a raise. There was also ninety-one thousand dollars spent in January for the test kits. And April nineteenth, eleven-hundred-and-fifty-two COVID test kits were distributed. There were ten thousand, two hundred purchased. I would like to know, what are they gonna do with those? Where are they? I know those kits last, and matter of fact, you've got the same brand that I got free from the government. They last for like a year, so if you got them in January, they're just about ready to expire. Other ways I think that you can help the citizens, if you consider another location for the courthouse that would cost half of what this would cost downtown Conyers, those are dollars that maybe you can help, you know, with the military. So I'm just looking at areas, even the retreats you all are going on. I do know that it was mentioned at one of the meetings that you all had went through the budget with a fine-tooth comb and couldn't find ways that you could, you know, cut any expenses. So if you consider that retreat in the courthouse, those are some expenses that would be cut. And thank you for my three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Turner, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Next up is Mr. Ray Bethune. Come on up, Mr. Bethune. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
When I come before you all to speak, I don't come to speak for myself. I went to the Board of Education meeting last Tuesday. I don't speak for myself. My family tell me I need to sit down and rest and stop speaking up for others and worry about myself, but I can't do that. I gotta worry about other people. That's less fortunate. The elderly can't afford to pay a lot of these taxes. I read about this lady, eighty-five years old, can't even pay for medication, don't know where her next meal come from. Ninety-six-year-old man appeared before the Board of Education talking about the increase in taxes on how he couldn't afford to pay it. You know, these people are gonna lose their homes. You know, in my subdivision, I hope this lady don't hear this. I got a nosy neighbor. She's an elderly. She's very nosey. But you know what? I don't want to see her go anywhere. She was in Rockdale County before me. She, just because she can't afford to pay her taxes or whatever to keep it up, not saying that she can't. I'm saying that we shouldn't be raising taxes on the elderly like it is. When a person get, especially in their seventies and eighties, we don't know what the life expectancy is. So just look at it this way. God has given us all a date of where we're gonna expire. So when this person expires, that house is gonna be back on the market or whatever. So more than likely, it's gonna be a younger person. So the taxes will be recouped from that point on. So look somewhere and find in your heart about these elderly peoples. You know, they retired for a reason. They got a fixed income. Their salaries don't go up when inflation and everything go up. You know, it doesn't. If Social Security goes up, it's not to match what the economy has inflated it to. So I'm asking you all to find in your heart, to try to do like me, I'm trying to help somebody. I didn't come up here to speak about me. I'm trying to do something for disabled veterans. And if I can do something for disabled veterans, I want to do something for the elderly also. My mother's no longer. My mother's no longer here with me. Without me, she wouldn't have been able to pay her taxes. So I don't want to see people have to go through things like that. It's something that we all can do to help them. I'm willing to do my part. Like I said, I made a promise that I would do something for the disabled veterans because I'm a veteran, and I'm doing it. I ain't, I'm not asking nobody to help or do anything. I just want to be able to do something and I'm asking you all to do something for the elderly. I didn't know how much time I had. It's a lot of other things I could say, but just look in your hearts and find something for the elderly. Like I say, they're going to expire one day. We all will. The house is going to be sold. The taxes will pick back up from that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bethune.
Thank you.
And thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. I really appreciate your spirit of compassion for our senior citizens and elderly in this community. And we certainly take everything you said to heart. So thank you again. Thank you so much. Don't think we have any other speakers for public comment. All right, well, we're going to go right on into board comment and start with Commissioner Washington.
It's so good to be with you all again. You know I miss you all when we spend too much time away from each other, so it's good to be here. Number one thing today is Election Day for the primary. So Sue Sanders has on her vote sticker. If you haven't already voted, please get out to vote. It's, you know, I tell people, it's a right that we have that we should cherish. And if you know somebody, I had to talk one of my family members into voting. One of my niece, one of my nieces, she was like, "I don't think it matters." And I had to show her how close some of these elections came and show her that it really does matter. So she voted, of course. She likes living with me, but so she, part of her rent. Also, I haven't been able to speak on it, but this is, may what is, was almost over, but it's Mental Health Awareness Month. And I know Commissioner Williams does a lot for mental health awareness to the point where sometimes we don't necessarily have to talk a lot about it because it's definitely been given a lot of recognition and attention. But, you know, this past couple of months, there have been a lot of people who have taken their own lives. There was a beauty queen in New York. There's a cheerleader who's in college, made a lot of headlines. We had a report today, somebody in this county, actually, they were investigating a suicide. And so I just want to tell people, mental health fragility, having a fragile mental health, that's real. And you never know who is having a bad day. So just be kind. When people are going through a hard time, be kind because you never know what they're experiencing. But the other part is, if you are experiencing something where you feel as if you might not want to see tomorrow, please reach out because the thing about it is, we've been given this great life for a reason. And it is something that we're supposed to cherish. So if you don't, y'all can call me, text me, email me. I will try to talk to you about whatever issue. But it always gets better tomorrow. Just make it to tomorrow and then the next tomorrow. But understand that if you have somebody that you see might need some help, don't be afraid to tell them that they need counseling. I know that I have a counselor that I've had one for a very long time. And it helps, you know, when you don't, when you need somebody to talk to and you don't think that anybody in your life will understand, at least they're going to listen for an hour. And a lot of times when you talk to somebody else, you see things in a different perspective. So I want people to take mental health awareness and mental health seriously because it is a very serious issue, but reach out to someone. And men are much worse than women. Men act like they don't want to show a vulnerability at all. And I think that's part of their culture. So, you know, I encourage men to seek help when they need it also. Not just at the barber shop, but they have people that you can pay to listen to your concerns. Let's see, also the Walk of Heroes, this is Memorial Day. You know, I tell everybody every year, even Memorial Day and Veterans Day, how many service members we had in our family. Even though I didn't serve, I tell people I belong to the group of people that prayed for those that were serving. That, you know, my brother did several tours. And so I was there praying daily for his, his health and his wellness. And, you know, when he has a Bronze Star that he won't talk about. And, you know, when you see somebody going through that, he's one of those people that we had to make sure he had some therapy after he got out of the military because he had seen so much and had to endure so much. So always, anytime that there's a holiday that recognizes our veterans, I'm always very, very tuned in and grateful for their service because I tell everybody, I've been a lot of places, but I'm always grateful to come back home to this country because I truly believe that we might not be perfect. We might have a lot of things that are flawed in this country, but we're the best thing going. So, and our military makes sure that we continue with those freedoms. I'm not going to get on those high horses. One of my initiatives, coming back from a trip, is I'm going, I would like to start an initiative where we are learning about substance, being able to take care of ourselves more, relying more on homegrown foods, homegrown energy, different things. So that's going to be something that you're going to see coming from post one in the near future. Just taking the whole idea of being able to sustain ourselves, take care of ourselves, and spread that through the community. Very excited about substance and turning inward to try to create a better community. Finally, I have been taking, going through the Colin Powell Leadership Academy. And throughout, I'm sorry, this academy, I will be sharing some of the jewels. It's just absolutely wonderful that we've been afforded. I wanted to bring some of those things to the community. But one of the first things that was presented in the academy was this quote by Theodore Roosevelt. And I wanted to share it with everybody, especially since this is an election season. But it's called "The Man in the Arena." It says, "It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles or where the doer of deeds should have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, and bloody, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes short again and again because there is no effort without error and shortcomings. But who knows actually strives to do the deeds? Who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions? Who spends himself in a worthy cause? Who at best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement? And who, at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who never know victory nor defeat." Theodore Roosevelt. And that's all I have until Dr. Williams reminds me of something else.
All right, all right. Commissioner Williams?
Well, of course, the first thing that I had written down was May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And we had a really wonderful event Friday evening, Peace Under the Pavilion. And we had a great turnout. There were speakers, there were dancers, there were vocalists, and then there was yoga on the grass. And Mary Lou Snow, who headed all of that up, and she did a wonderful job putting that program together. People really appreciated it. As to what you were talking about with suicide, it brought to mind, a few years ago when I had a number of mental health community conversations, forums, Kevin Hines was one of our speakers. And he is one of a very few surviving, survivors who had jumped off the Golden Gate Bridge. And he tells his story very poignantly. And I remember him saying, first off, I remember him saying, the minute his hands left the bridge, he regretted it. Secondly, though, I remember him also saying, he had ridden a bus. He was in tears the whole way. The bus driver kicked him off the bus, said, you know, "Get off." No one said anything to him. And he said, if someone had asked him, "Was he okay?", he would have told them he was not. And he would not have jumped. And so there is a resource, Mental Health First Aid, that teaches signs and symptoms, but also that it's okay to say, "Are you okay? Are you thinking of hurting yourself?" That is not going to push someone into doing something. It recognizes instead that people are reaching out and they need our assistance and they need our awareness. So I know I've advocated for it. I'm going to continue to advocate that our employees get an opportunity to take that Mental Health First Aid class. Because it's just like our first aid, CPR first aid classes, Mental Health First Aid class, it's just equally as important. The two work together. And we can never forget that. So, Mr. Bethune, I received a letter this week, or last week, from a woman who was concerned about how she was, she was older and she was concerned about how she was going to pay her taxes. And so I am asking that we put together resources, a list of resources, of ways that assistance that there may be available, ways to help our citizens find information and assistance also. Because I think it's a growing problem as house prices have, the values have gone up, taxes have gone up. And so it's a situation like you mentioned that is critical for those who are on a fixed income. Because all of a sudden, the home they've been living in for many, many years is worth, in some cases, double what it was a couple of years ago. And so I would like to see us put together resources available through the Senior Citizen, Senior Center that will be available for assistance. You were talking, Commissioner Washington, about subsistence. And as you were talking, two words came to mind, self-sufficiency and emergency management. And part of emergency management is being self-sufficient. And that's where that substance comes in. You know, grow a garden, put a tomato plant in a pot and see what happens. Now, it's not going to be great necessarily the first year because we did that last year. Actually, my husband did that last year, I didn't.
You're going to blame it on him?
No. And actually, it was, you know, it was better than we thought because it tasted so good. But this year, you should see the garden. The tomato plants are just about six feet tall, covered in tomatoes. We never had, it's like anything else, you learn as you go. And so just because you're not successful the first time, you just got to keep figuring it out and finding more information and asking people who have done it. It's, I mean, that's true of anything. I used to tell my students, anything worth doing is worth doing poorly at first because you're not going to be proficient the first time you try something. And so, you know, I think I should bring a picture of those tomato plants that are unbelievably tall.
Some tomatoes. I was just going to let you know that you can reach out to the extension service. They're welcome.
Yes, yes, they are.
Or a single tomato.
Yes, yes. So one thing I wanted to mention, it's already been mentioned that today is the election day, but there have been four precincts that vote in entirely new places. And as I've been making phone calls, people are not aware of that. You know, everybody got their little card from the voter elections, but it was tiny. You really had to try to figure out what it said. But Fieldstone Precinct and Stanton Precinct are both voting at the Board of Elections on West Avenue. They don't have something in their neighborhood. Millstead Precinct is now voting at the First Baptist Conyers Church. And the Rockdale Precinct is now voting at Love and Hugs Christian Tabernacle Church on Klondike. So just make sure when you go to vote that you know where you're going. And because, like I said, those four have, those four have changed this year. That is my, those are my comments. Let my, get my grammar straight.
Commissioner Washington?
I'm good.
All right. I'm going to call up our Deputy Director of RWR, Deputy Director Vaughn Jamison. He is in charge of our customer service over at the Big Blue, the Customer Service Center. He's got a, we've been listening to our customers and our citizens. And Deputy Director Jamison and his team have been listening and making progress. He has a progress and update. Deputy Director Jamison, tell us what's going on in customer service in RWR.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Madam Commissioner. So good to see everybody this morning. We're excited. We took some of our customer feedback the other day, last commission meeting we had. And we just hit the ground running again. We did a robust training. We did a robust training for all of our customer care representatives to make sure we were all on the same page. I actually called it Operation Same Page. And so we're all going to be saying the same thing. And we're also making sure that we're working with all of our customers. We understand that this climate has been one where our customers have been frustrated. And we hear our customers loud and clear. And so we're ensuring that we are shoring up our leadership team over there. We're providing quality customer service. We actually had even our meter reading technology partner that we use to help read our meters and get that technology, they came in. There were some places where our field techs had some questions. So we were able to schedule them in. They were very responsive. They were able to come in and provide some additional training also because there were some issues in the field. When they were out reading, things weren't registering and they were emptying out of their handhelds. And so we were able to come in and provide that level of training to ensure that they're not having to go back to do duplicate work. It's frustrating when you get out there and read the meter and something erases, you have to go back out there and do it again. And so we're really excited about that. Second thing I want to make sure everybody knows about, their SPOSS dollars are at work. We are hitting the ground running June 6. Some people have already received their postcards for AMI radio read technology. That will allow the county, without the intervention of a manual intervention, to read their meters from the office. And so we're really excited that the whole county is pushing to be on our radio read. And so we're looking for a finish date somewhere around the first quarter of next year. But we're really excited because it allows us to keep pace without the human intervention. The last thing I want to say, and I'm done, is that we're billing everybody on time. That's the great thing. Everyone's been billed on time. We are in the month of May and we've had no customer receive more than five bills and no less than four. So that means we're billing on time and we're putting people back on their normal billing cycle. RWR is still not doing any disconnects. We're not charging any late fees. We are willing to work with our customers and we're inviting our customers. If you need help paying your bill, please contact us. We also are in partnership with LIWAP, which is the federally funded program that allows customers to actually get assistance on their water bill. We've seen customers get anywhere from 200 and a few came. We've seen customers get anywhere from two hundred and in few cases, over a thousand dollars to help with their water bill. So I wanna read this number for our customers who need assistance with, uh, they can contact Partnership for Community Action. And that phone number is four zero four nine two nine twenty four hundred. Four zero four nine two nine twenty five hun- hundred. And if you hit option three, they, um, they have some things that you'll have to go through and provide, um, for, uh, to make sure that you qualify. But it's a really wonderful program for people looking to get back on their feet. One of the things we don't want our customers to do, Mr. Chairman, is to have higher than normal bills. And then six or seven months from now, look for a way to pay it. So we're giving them an opportunity to get out in front of it.
Well, we, go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, I was just gonna say, Partnership for Community Action is, has a physical location here in Rockdale, over at fourteen hundred Parker Road.
Yes.
So, you know, if, if, if someone's confused with all the options and all of that, they can go over and talk to somebody.
And that's wonderful news if they're taking people now. We were told, um, about a month ago, if they weren't taking anyone physically, that you have to actually schedule an appointment via the telephone, but fourteen, yeah.
Well, you may have to give an appointment, but they, they do have a physical location.
Commissioner Washington, any points on what Deputy Director shared with us about customer service?
I'm glad to, I'm, I'm, I always like training. I, I like it for numerous reasons. Number one, it builds camaraderie. But number two, it gives the, um, employees an opportunity to, to tell you what's going on also. Because if there's a problem that they may not have been able to communicate with you, training oft- often brings that out. So I'm glad to hear the training. I'm glad you all are all on one page after Operation One, Same Page.
Same page.
And, um, I'm glad to see that people are coming up saying that they're being timely billed. So I'm, I'm glad to see the progress.
Well, Deputy Director Jamison, uh, thank you and your team over at the Customer Service Center, uh, Big Blue. And, and really wanna say thank you for listening, uh, to the citizens and hearing from them, uh, particularly about, uh, being on the same page. Uh, when Ms. Croll came in a few weeks ago and she made, mentioned that she spoke with a customer service rep and had a little difficulty getting understanding and gaining knowledge. Uh, that was very concerning. Um, I did not have to go to Deputy Director Jamison. He knew where my mind was when it came to career development and training. He came to me, said, "Mr. Chairman, I already know what you're thinking. We're gonna get on top of it." So he created this program called Same Page. It's important that everyone in that facility is on the same page and that they're saying the exact same thing to all of our citizens, uh, particularly when it comes to senior citizens. And I remember Ms. Croll talking about the fact that her bill said past due. Well, that's really alarming to a senior citizen when they see something that says past due. That lets them know that if they don't hurry up and get in there, something might happen, something about to go down. So she came in and she shared with us what was going on. And our customer service leadership, um, heard and listened and created a program called Same Page. They're going through training. I think continuous improvement, Commissioners, is always critical to the success of this overall organization that we keep all of our employees in the front seat of a training class as often as possible because technology changes, things changing, how we interface and interact with our customers are always changing. And we have to make sure that we're on the cutting edge of the latest, greatest technology and that we're keeping our people abreast. Because even the best customer service representatives sometimes have a moment, maybe even have a day. And we have to make sure that we can work with that person and coach them through that moment or coach them through that not so good day because we have humans over there in customer service. We don't have robots. So we have people that deal with people. Thank you so much. That's good news. I'm glad to hear about that. Also want to, uh, Deputy Director Wilson, our Deputy Director in Parks and Recreation. Uh, call up Deputy Director Wilson. You, you know, when you come to these meetings, you have to always be ready. You never know when the chairman's gonna call on you. She's filling in the gap this morning for her director, uh, Director, uh, Jason Redman. But you all have some exciting programs coming up for the summer for our young people. I, I heard yesterday about the, uh, we're bringing back the Sunset Cinemas. Can you tell us a little bit about?
Uh, Sunset Cinema is, uh, June fourth, right there at Johnson Park. So it's an outdoor, uh, movie. So we'll be showing Scene Two as well as, um, Encanto. So it's for the full, of the whole family. It's free of charge. Uh, I think the movie begins at six thirty in the evening. Um, we'll have games and small prizes, so it's always a lot of fun.
And give us the date and time again.
Uh, June fourth, six thirty PM at Johnson Park.
You're doing two movies?
Yeah, uh, two different weekends.
Okay, so June fourth.
June fourth and then, give me a second.
I have to get on KJ's, um, agenda for the social calendar.
Yeah, June fourth and the other one is going to be July ninth.
June fourth and July ninth?
Yes, sir.
This is exciting. I mean, uh, yeah, we were not, that's okay, that's okay. It's gonna be exciting, Commissioner. That's fine. Uh, COVID shut us down in so many kind of ways. Uh, when Parks and Recreation, a couple of years ago, brought the, um, not only the Summer Concert Series out at Costly Mill, but over on Johnson Park, we were able to do the Sunset Cinemas. And a lot of our young people and parents who have multiple kids and looking for something free of charge to be able to take their kids out and get them out, we couldn't do that during COVID. Now we're bringing it back and it gives them that outlet to be able to, so on, the first date is June?
Fourth.
June fourth and then on July?
Ninth.
July ninth. Folks, you can go to our website and check out all of the, uh, other activities that we're doing throughout the summer over at Johnson Park, not just for the youth, but for everybody in the community. Anything, uh, Deputy Director Wilson, anything else you wanna tell us hot, that's going on in Parks and Rec before you take your seat?
Yes, sir. Um, we also have the beach opening at Costly Mill.
Okay.
That's gonna be happening.
Yeah, that's, that's when I said hot, that's beach, it all works together. Tell us about it.
Uh, that'll be on June twelfth.
Okay.
Um, again, it's just a sneak peek of the beach opening. I know we were closed down last year due to COVID. So again, we'll have some fun, some games, and we'll have sessions for the community to get in the pool. Uh, we'll have some food as well and some light refreshments, so.
And when is that beach opening?
Uh, that is June twelfth and it's from eleven to three o'clock, eleven AM to three.
So that's on a Saturday?
That's on a Sunday.
On a Sunday?
Yes, sir.
Eleven AM to three?
Yes.
Beach opening?
There's a flyer, yeah.
All right, very good, very good.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we're also advertising it, I'm sorry not to cut you off, but on the electronic billboards, um, there should be one as well as our concert series.
Oh, wow, okay, all right.
No speedos, Chairman.
Deputy Director Wilson is our Deputy Director in charge of Parks and Recreation, working with Director, uh, Jason Redman. She's doing a fantastic job. Give her a round of applause. Thank you so much. We're excited about all of those upcoming events out at Johnson Park and Costly Mill. So make sure that you are ready as we move forward. I took a page out of what, uh, Commissioner Washington mentioned earlier during her comments. Um, I think that was President Roosevelt you was quoting. And, um, you talked about no effort without error. Uh, just reminding all of our citizens that our employees are people. There's no effort without a little bit of error. In order to make it towards progress, you're gonna probably come across a couple of bumps in the road along the way. Leadership is about ownership. Uh, we like to take ownership of those things that we fund the ball and we may, uh, come across a bump in the road. But we wanna own it and then we wanna do what we can to correct it. Because we can't be everywhere, when you see something, we ask that you say something. Also, Commissioner Williams made mention to our employees. I wanna just highlight a little bit more about mental illness and mental health when it comes to public service employees. And when I say public service employees, Chief Mack, I'm not limited that conversation to just the fire department or the sheriff's office or the police department. But that also includes school teachers, uh, county employees. People are dealing with things. Anybody that is, if you've been in the people business for about two hours, then you know that you got to hold on to something to keep you grounded as you're in the people business. Cause you're gonna be tried and tested day in and day out. So mental illness and people go through different things. So we also have to keep all of our public service employees, including public safety, our school teachers, in our prayers and in our thoughts. Because when you talk about mental illness and mental health, uh, it's not just the people that we're servicing. Oftentimes, it's the people who are giving the service, going through, uh, uh, the social worker may need a counselor. The teacher, even the preacher, Pastor Hall, may need a counselor. So those people who are constantly taking in and bearing the burdens of other people, oftentimes, they have some burdens to bear themselves and they're dealing with balancing between work, their calling, and home. And we take that for granted, so I wanted to make sure I pointed that out because, uh, we could very well have employees who are about to explode. Thank goodness, Deputy Director Carter, we have the EAP program. And I wanna encourage you all to do everything you can to keep pushing that out to our employees. Let them know that we have help available. And sometimes people a little bit embarrassed or hesitant to ask for help. So we wanna make sure that they know that we have the kinda help, uh, professional help that is needed. But oftentimes, uh, the folks who are serving the people who need the help, sometimes they're going through their own little silent crisis all on their own. So I wanted to make mention of that as well. Also wanna remind you, as school has come to a close here in Rockdale County, a lot of, uh, activities and, and a lot of movement of our young people in our communities and neighborhoods, please be mindful of your speed as you're moving through. This is also, uh, Director Morgan, a time of the year when animal services, uh, calls tend to increase. And we get a lot of calls about dogs running loose in the neighborhood without a leash. So make sure that you obey the county ordinance and you put your dog on a leash. Uh, if you're, let me be just as candid as I know how to be. If your dog poops in the neighbor's yard, we ask that you pick it up. Uh, take a bag with you out there in the morning or what have you and pick it up because we want you to respect the neighbors. The last thing the sheriff's office want is an argument or, or, or knockdown drag out by two neighbors because somebody's dog pooped on somebody else's property. That might sound a little humorous to you, but people really get, they get upset and they'll go all out of whack for some of the craziest things. So I have to make mention of this stuff because they actually get calls for that kinda foolishness. Make sure you abide by the ordinances and do what you're supposed to do. If you see a stray dog that's not on a leash and it's moving through the neighborhood, call Animal Services, okay? And, and we'll do what we need to do. I gotta give a closing shout out to Ms. Williams, the lady we showed in the video. I wanna say thank you to Ms. Williams and the, the people over at the Salem, the Old Salem Township, uh, for following the proper protocol and having the right spirit and the right approach to reach out to us, but being very, uh, diligent in her, uh, effort to reach out to us. And again, to none other than our very own Patty Pearson, making sure that my office and all of the other directors receive that information about her request, uh, for service and the need for service out there. Uh, now, uh, Director Mims, uh, we're able to call you Director Mims. And I was just thinking, Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams, a moment ago, as I was looking out into the audience, I saw just a few heads bobbing for apples. And I said, uh, maybe we should add some kinda music or something to the BOC meeting to kinda pick it up and add a little, I, I, I'm, I'm, that's, I'm just, I'm just saying, just a suggestion, just to bring a little life because I saw a few folks kinda nodding in here. And I said, no, I don't know whether it was, it just, and it wasn't just citizens, citizens. It was, it wasn't, it wasn't, wasn't just the citizens. Just thought I'd, you know, so just maybe, uh, all the talent you have in PR, maybe y'all can come up with something creative with all those creative juices you have to kinda add a little uplift, uh, to the atmosphere between messages and transitions during the meeting. Uh, keep it classy and tasteful and all that good stuff. But just think about it, think about it. Uh, we won't give no suggestions, Commissioners. We're just asking that she, just, no, 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 don't, don't do it, don't do it. We won't.
You wanna entertain us?
We won't be.
I have a pre, um, Commissioner meeting playlist.
Okay, all right, well, uh, that, it will be reviewed by the Office of the Chairman before it's played.
That might be a good idea.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. Director Rolich, is there any need for executive session this afternoon?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Chief Kate, are there any pending or pressing announcements that we have overlooked during this meeting?
No, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. This meeting is adjourned.